Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Richmond Public Informational hearing on Saturday, March 4th at 9:00 AM. Good to see all of you here. You made it through the snow. We will start with. We don't have to do any opening, right?
You should always technically as a hearing, so you should open the public hearing and we'll have the public hearing and then you close it.
Alright, so we will open the public hearing. We need a motion?
No, I think you did.
Oh, here we are. Okay.
Execute.
This is a little bit of a change from our typical agenda.
Well, this is your last chance to wield unfettered power, you know?
Oh, yes, the unfettered power. I'm gonna miss that. Okay, so Australia, we're gonna, we're gonna start with the articles.
Um, you know, you could do welcome and public comment. I think I heard somebody maybe trying to say something, but I'm not sure.
Any public comment, question regarding something that is not on the agenda? Right? No, okay, we can move into Australian ballot information hearings for discussing Article 2. Shall the voters of the town of Richmond approve a budget of $4,530,571 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town of Richmond? This item will be voted on from the floor on Monday, March 6th, and that meeting begins at 6 o'clock. But it's, we are covering it in this meeting as public information, so we can answer questions people may have.
Okay. And yeah, just a reminder that technically the public information hearing is for items that are on the Australian ballot. So after we do the budget, we will talk about the waterline vote and also the Conservation Reserve Fund. And just a reminder that we will be having a town meeting on Monday evening this year. The voters moved to move it to Monday, March 6th at 6:00 PM at Campbell's Hump Middle School. And that is when the actual voting will happen on the budget who will happen at that meeting. And then the next day is when Australian ballot voting will happen, March 7th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that will be the waterline vote, the Conservation Reserve Fund, and candidates for public office.
Yes.
I just note that on Front Porch Forum, there's some back and forth about why is the budget dealt with in town meeting and not Australian ballot? And I posed a question, do we want to at least momentarily address that here or not?
I think we should address that here, actually. Um, so there was a post, if you hadn't seen it, on Front Porch Forum, someone asking why it is that we vote on the budget, which we haven't the last couple of years because of COVID. We've voted on the budget by Australian ballot. And the, the question is, why aren't we doing that as a practice? Because we rarely get, from my perspective, probably less than 5% of our population attending town meeting. And so why is this not being voted on by Australian ballot as a practice?
You're, okay, so the, the answer is that the town of Richmond votes on public questions by voice vote unless the town specifically moves to have those questions beyond the ballot. So Conservation Budget was actually voted by the residents to be moved to Australian ballot some years ago, and that's why that's voted on Australian ballot, but the budget is not. The last couple of years, the legislature put in special powers so that the municipalities could move to Australian ballot for their regular public questions, even if their charter says that they typically need to do those by voice vote due to COVID. And the last two years, the Select Board took advantage of that legislation and moved everything to Australian ballot. So that's where we've been without the town meeting. This year, the legislature actually did pass that, but there was literally like four days to react and, and change everything. And we had already, I think we warned everything, we were ready to go for, for the in-person town meeting. And it seemed like the will of the people was, let's get back to town meeting. And then going back prior in 2020, the town voted to move town meeting from Tuesday to the Monday night prior with the hope and the goal of increasing participation. So this will be our first chance at a Monday evening. I've also heard some questions about how do we get town meeting back to a Tuesday? Or how do we put something on Australian ballot? Well, we would have to vote at a town meeting or especially warn town meeting in person, voice vote to do either of those things. We could also vote to hold an Australian ballot to consider either of those. So if we wanted to vote to say, let's consider by Australian ballot, moving town meeting to Tuesday or a vote by Australian ballot to do everything by Australian ballot, then we would be voted on voice to do that. And if that passed, then have an Australian ballot vote to see if we wanted to hold a town meeting by Australian ballot essentially. So there is a process in place, takes some time, but that's so that everybody can be heard.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, you know, I think there are a couple of reasons to do a town meeting in person. One is, I, I find that when I go to town meeting and there is a debate on a particular issue, I become much better informed. And, and I oftentimes walk into town meeting with, with one opinion and then change that opinion after the debate. You know, so I consider a town meeting to be a representative democracy as opposed to a Greek democracy where everybody votes. The other reason is, is yes, we get, you know, maybe 200, 250 people who show up at, at town meeting. But if you notice, we don't have that many people here today. Are not even close. And what?
Which is normally the case for this informational meeting.
Which is normally the case for all of our, our meetings. I'll be curious how it happens on Monday night. But it's having 200 people come together is really an important community building exercise in my mind. One of the things I'm very disappointed in with Monday night's meeting is that we will not have any tables set up for town committees. We, we, we won't have lunch with the Grange. And what I find it done on our, our typical town meetings on, on Tuesday, it, it, it is a, an excellent time for me anyways to meet and talk with people that I wouldn't have seen otherwise. So I personally really miss our, our conventional town meeting and hope we go back to it.
Yes, Jay.
One other minor little thing. There is. If you have an Australian ballot budget, there's no opportunity for the townspeople to vote to amend it. And while it's more democratic to give people a chance to say, no, I think the budget should be less or budget should be more. On the other hand, it's kind of anti-democratic to do it with, you know, 5% of the voters. So it's kind of a judgment call. It was very close, the, the vote in 2020 to move to Monday night was actually very close. And the JP's and others are going to be have a petition at the polls. If you wish to sign to say, I'd like to move this back to Tuesday. If enough people vote, it's, you know, it will, it will move forward. I mean, enough people sign, it'll move forward, but you know, ideally, we'd like to ever have large percentage of people come in person. Unfortunately, we live in the year 2023, and that's probably not going to happen.
Thank you, Jay. Linda?
Morning. I just wanted to say that we will have the Girl Scouts and the people from the senior center plan on being there with a table and not one committee asked to have a table set up for their information.
Thank you, Linda. And I, I would just like to point out in the post on Front Porch Forum, it was mentioned that by having a, a vote by Australian ballot on the budget is non-inclusive. And I would agree 100%. We, when you have 5% of your population voting on something, one, you don't know if it's a, if it's a majority of town, if that represents the town. And secondly, I, we're doing a lot of DEI work, diversity, equity, and inclusion work. And when you talk about who can take time off of work, it's not typically our marginalized communities. And so we are excluding them. This is a very exclusive event that we're holding on a Tuesday morning when most people don't have the option of taking time off. Now, if the state, because this is, well, I think the only state that does town meeting decided to make that a holiday, then I think it's a different conversation, but it is not a state holiday. And, and there are many people, and I would, I would presume that the marginalized communities cannot take that time off. So I just want to throw that out there. Yes, fine.
Um, so I don't want to extend this, but at the risk of appearing to be ironic, which I do not intend, perhaps this should be a discussion item at town meeting.
Yes, perhaps. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Linda?
Thank you. People have come into the office and they have asked, uh, let's just put it on Australian, and most of their comments have only been that everybody should vote, but we only want to vote it down. So that was, has been a lot of the comments. And I said, well, you're gonna have to go to these pre-planning meetings. And they really don't have any interest, most of them, in doing that. And there has been in the past, I don't know where it sits right now, but many, many, many businesses let people off for town meeting. And I have these sheets that I sign and give them to them, and they really came to town meeting. They turn that in at work. I know that some places, I know where my brother works, they really encourage people to go to their town meeting. So it's, you find people that didn't come to town meeting because they went skiing that day, or, you know, it, it's their choice. Yeah, I don't really think it's so much that they have to work. I think they just don't want to come to the town meeting. That's just my thought.
Thanks, Linda. Yes.
So having a vested interest in town meeting. I attended town Mallory workshop every year. Stay out of Joshua one year and one night. We are not unique. We're all, all towns are struggling with participation and, and how we want to do that. So perhaps that will get some momentum for the state holiday situation, but, but we're not unique in this situation.
Has it ever been presented to have it as a state holiday?
I, I don't, I, I haven't heard that. I don't know that, but for sure. I can check anyone, but.
And there will be people who go skiing if it's a state holiday. Absolutely. Okay.
Just one other thing to add to that conversation. When it comes to the budget specifically, no matter how it's voted on in person or Australian ballot, there is at least three to four months of work prior to that. It starts in October with discussions, Select Board through early January, where I've seen multiple times the residents come to those meetings, have questions, and then the board will make changes to the budget that is actually presented to the voters. So there is ample time for public feedback and comments and changes to the budget, not just on town meeting.
Thank you. I'm glad you said that because I thought about that when, when Jay had mentioned that they, you don't get an opportunity to change it, but you absolutely do.
You absolutely do, but to, in response to what Linda said about people walking into her office and wanting specifically to vote the budget down, they probably not looked at it. They're probably just, they're people who will watch the world burn, basically. But those people will say, you didn't even give me a chance to amend it. Well, that's their chance. Now they have to show up. But I agree, I, I, I would rather the most voters have a chance to weigh in on it, and that would be Australian ballot. But we have to, we can't just say it's changed. We have to take steps.
Okay. Can I ask a logistical question about the process of amending or changing the budget? My understanding, the way you're presenting this information is if it goes to Australian ballot and is passed, the majority of the community passes the budget in that mechanism, then it's forever immortalized. And is there no other opportunity to make any changes to it at that point? How does that happen?
So once, I think if it were, if we were to go to Australian ballot and then everybody voted and it passed, yes, I think at that point, the budget would be, it would be the budget, it would be locked in. I think there are times when the Select Board can make some changes to the budget, sort of in the budget season, if there's certain things that change. But that's usually fairly rare.
So my follow-up question, so the thing that's happening organically in a live town meeting, and there's the live vote and the opportunity to amend the budget as proposed, there's no mechanism for that? There's no way for that to be incorporated if you do go to the Australian ballot?
Right. And another thing that's, I've seen this happen at town meetings where somebody will say, I object to this one line item. And they want to strike that one line item. Unfortunately, the, they don't have the power, Clint, correct me if I'm wrong, to strike the one line item. They can say, I propose reducing the budget by the amount of that line item, but they can't.
It's all in the language.
Right. And so we could reduce, we could say, I object to paying for that, that piece of equipment. We would still probably buy the piece of equipment. We just have to subtract the money from somewhere else. The best answer really is try to get people to come in person to the budget meetings in October, November, and December. Because you know, your sister, that's her favorite thing to do. And, and to be totally honest, her input was very, very valuable. That's, that opportunity is open to everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, Jeff?
So I, if, if, at the risk of extending this conversation, but what else are we gonna do other than shovel snow? I've had the opportunity to serve on the Mount Mansfield School Board when a budget failed on Australian ballot. And I gotta tell you, it was a really painful experience. A, a failed budget does not mean that, that the voters are asking to reduce the budget. Not at this, you, you cannot conclude that they're asking to increase the budget. We have increased our town budget at town meeting for various different items that were voted on at, at that time. If you, if you have an Australian ballot with a yes or no question, should we pass this budget or no? And it fails, you really don't know. Why? And for what reason? You, all you know is that it didn't, it wasn't acceptable on that day with that, with the, the, the people who vote. Which, you know, even when we, even when we vote Australian ballot, you, my guess is at, at best on Tuesday for our Australian ballot items, if we get 1,000 votes, I would be surprised. You know, that we might, which is a third of our, a third of our, our voter checklist. So it's still, you know, it's still representative, but not totally democratic. And a, a failed budget vote is a very painful process. It, what we had to do when, when that happened was take a meat cleaver and say, you know, let's just cut X number of dollars and put it back up. So it's not, it's not pleasant and, and to my mind, it's not thoughtful.
Thank you, Jeff, Linda. And then we'll move on.
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna say that we would have to. I do like going to the town meeting, talking with the people and, and making changes if you're gonna make changes that way. But we certainly would have to stress that they need to come to the Select Board meeting, planning meetings before that, where you're planning for the, for the budget. If you were to go to Australia and hope that people would give their thoughts and ideas.
Thank you, Linda. Okay. With that, let's move into the budget.
Okay. So I've got a presentation on the budget. We'll go over FY '24 budget overview, followed by discussion of municipal operations, then a review of reserves and unassigned and restricted funds. We'll review the debt service, a review of the budget by department, and then we'll have questions at the end. So I'd like to start with a couple of fairly basic things, but things that maybe not everybody pays attention to and hopeful when we're discussing the budget. So fiscal year explanations, fiscal years are named according to the calendar year in which they end. So the previous fiscal year that we just finished up was fiscal year '22, that began on July 1st, 2021, and ended on June 30th, 2022. Currently, we are in the middle of fiscal year '23, which began this past July, and will end this coming June 30th, 2023. And the budget being voted on is for fiscal year '24, which will begin July 1st of this year and end June 30th of next year. We're going to be talking a bit at the beginning here about reserve funds and unassigned and restricted funds. I will go into a bit more detail on each of these later in the presentation. But as we talk about how this budget compares to last year's budget, it's important to understand these two, these two topics. So reserve funds, they function like savings accounts and are typically used for larger capital purchases. So for instance, we have a highway reserve fund and we need to purchase a, a plow truck. We frequently use money from that fund to go towards that plow truck. And those are thoughtfully planned for and put in and deposited into throughout the budget season. Then we also have unassigned and restricted funds. These are essentially surplus funds. So if we come to the end of the fiscal year and we didn't expend all of our expenses due to some reason, perhaps vacancy savings, or we received more revenue from sources that we weren't expecting, maybe we had a FEMA claim, we got money in from that, or we had more money from a state source in some sort, then we will regularly have a little extra money in the budget that we didn't fully expend. If those come from any department except for the highway department, they're classified as unassigned funds. And then they can be used in the future for any department, including highway. The way Vermont statutes are set up, any money that was raised specifically for the highway budget, if we have any money left over the highway budget, it has to stay with highway. So we cannot use that for a planning project or for a new fire truck. It has to stay with something related to highway, either equipment or personnel or, or a project related to highway. So our town budget, the spending from FY '23 to FY '24 is down by about $566,000 or about 11%. By section, we look at the general fund, it's down about $176,000 or about 6%. And the highway fund is down $389,000 or about 17%. And while expenses are down, there is actually a 3.67% increase in the tax rate from FY '23. And of course, the logical question is, if we're spending less, why is the tax rate going up? So while the expense side of the budget is down from FY '24 to FY '24, there's been some change in the way we use reserve funds and how those are included in the budget. So prior to this fiscal year, any planned purchases using reserve funds were included on the expense side of the budget and on the revenue side. So let's say we were going to use $50,000 to buy a pickup truck. We would have put that on the expense side and then offset that on the revenue side with $50,000, so it wasn't affecting the tax rate. In FY '24, we changed that practice rather than having it on the expense side and then offsetting revenue. If it was going to be completely offset by use of town, use of a reserve fund, we put it onto a separate document to indicate that. It's in the town report at the end of the budget to show the use of reserve funds. So that's one thing that has come out of the expenses of this budget, that kind of make it a little bit lower than last year. So capital reserve expenditures on the document for FY '24 show $234,000 in reserve uses in FY '24 with about $81,000 from the general fund and $153,000 from the highway. So if we were to include those expenses in the FY '24 budget, the general fund would still be less, but $95,000 less versus down here. You can see last, we're at with the actual budget right now, $176,000 less. If we included reserve fund purchases in the general fund, we'd be at $95,000 less. In highway, we would be at $236,000 less than last year versus $389,000. So combined spending would be about $332,000 less versus $566,000 less where we are now. So that tells some of the story, but not all of the story. So when we look at the total expenditures from FY '23 to FY '24, the top line here shows last year's budget of about $5 million and this year's budget of about 4.5 million. So there's our difference of $566,000 that we talked about earlier. Use of reserve funds is the first thing we're going to look at, and that's what we just talked about. So we used $289,000 in reserve funds last year, so that came off of what we needed to raise in taxes to meet that budget expenses. Then we look at use of unassigned and restricted funds, and these are the surplus funds that we talked about from the general fund and from highway. In FY '23, we budgeted to use $919,000 of those. This year, we budgeted to use 500,000, so about $400,000 less in use of unassigned and restricted funds. And then we have non-tax revenue. So these are things like state grants that we get every year, things we would get for like sale of town property, things like that. So that's fairly even from year to year, 445 to 460 this year. So at the bottom line, you can see what we're leaving for tax revenue last year was about $3.4 million. And for FY '24, we're looking at about $3.5 million. So that brings us to our tax rate. Last year, our final tax rate was .7427. Oh, no, sorry, .7164 in FY '23. For FY '24, we're looking at .7427 for a .0263 per hundred dollars of property value influence. So that's where we get our 3.767% increase from FY '23 to '24. Also, a note that the tax rate presented here and all estimates that follow are based on a grand list value that we had in July of 2022. Currently, the town is undergoing a reappraisal, so property values are probably going to change. We haven't had reappraisal for a while, and we saw from our common level of appraisal, which tries to match and understand where we're at. We were off quite a bit, so the grand list will ultimately change a decent amount is what we're expecting. So when we set the tax rate, the true tax rate for FY '24, it will be set on that, that new grand list. We don't set the tax rate until July of each year. So just keep that in mind, that we're kind of trying to compare apples to apples. But when we start talking in June and July about the reappraisal value and what the new tax rate's going to be, it will be a bit of a different conversation. So the proposed tax rate increase of .0263, that's an increase of about $26.29 per $100,000 in property value. So you can see that the 200,000, that doubles to 52, 58, 300,000, 78, 87, and 400,000 is a $105.15 increase from '23 to '24. Looking at total bill, the impacts of the budget on $100,000 property value, the FY '23 tax rate was $716, that increases by 26 to get to 742. And you can follow that down where 200,000 goes from about $1,400 to 146, 300,000 goes from 2149 to 2228. And 400,000 goes from 2866 to 2971. Sorry, my, my Zoom screen was blocking what I was trying to see here, so let me do something. Okay. So the Conservation Reserve Fund, this item is voted on by Australian ballot each year. The question on the ballot is to approve funding the Conservation Reserve Fund by adding one cent to the municipal tax rate in FY '24. We will have a presentation on this. I don't know why it's just not, okay. We'll have a presentation with more details on the Conservation Reserve Fund after this. But as far as how this affects the budget, the estimated contribution to the reserve fund would be $48,305 based on the July 2022 grand list. Again, that will change based on the new grand list value. It essentially will add one penny per $100 of property value. And when we have a new grand list value, the contribution will reflect the new grand list value. But if we kind of keep the grand list the same, $48,305 added to the, the budget would make the tax rate increase go from 3.67 to 5.07. And Jeff, I see your comment popping up. We will get to questions at the end of the presentation, if that makes sense. Okay. So what would that look like as far as increases per $100,000 in property value? It would go up about $10 for $100,000. So we'll go from 26, 29 to 36, 29 for $100,000 in property value. And you can carry that forward, 200,000, you would increase by 20, 300,000, you'd increase by 30 from your earlier increase. And 400,000 would be an increase of 40,000 from the increases that we just looked at. So this chart shows what the total tax bill would be with Conservation Fund passed. $100,000 home would be $753, 200,000 would be 1,505, 300,000 would be 2,258, and 400,000. Three hundred thousand would be two thousand two hundred and fifty eight and four hundred thousand dollar would be three thousand and eleven dollars. And also just a reminder that the school tax is also part of your property tax. You would have been looking at those numbers thinking, gee, that's less than I pay now. But you have to remember that the education tax is about seventy percent of your total tax bill. So the municipal rate is only about thirty percent. So looking at our town budget spending over the years, you can see we've had a, a fairly smooth line. We had a bit of a higher budget last year. Some of that was due. To uh, three large purchases in highway that all were in the budget, um, and so we went up a bit and now we're, we're back on a more of a, of a smooth trajectory. Looking at it by department, um, the highway department is about forty one percent of the budget, which makes sense with a large amount of equipment and projects that they do. Followed by administration and police and fire and library. And then uh, less capital intensive planning and zoning charitable contributions, the assessors and recreation. So now we'll get into municipal overview, just to give everybody a bit of a. Better understanding of what all the departments do. We have the clerk, administration and finance, which is one full-time town manager. Finance director, the town clerk, a part-time assistant town clerk. Um, and a full-time, but thirty hours per week assistant to the town manager. Uh, these positions operate very closely to manage revenue, payments, payroll, policies, projects and much more. The police department is budgeted for one full-time chief, one full-time sergeant, three full-time officers. Three per diem officers and a part-time assistant. Both the chief and the sergeant are also working shifts as officers. And the three per diem officers work on average two to four shifts per month. Um, we have been short-staffed for the last number of years, so we are not currently sat at this level, but this is what the budget is budgeting for. The fire department has one chief, one assistant chief, three captains, a lieutenant and twelve firefighters. It's an all-volunteer department, but they do get paid for hours work and training. Um, and we have a pay scale for the department over there, but they're basically paid when they show up for fire calls and for training. So there's not a set number of hours per week and it depends on what they get called for. Planning and zoning, we have a full-time director of planning and zoning and a full-time zoning administrator. They're involved with issuing permits, reviewing and rewriting zoning regulations, staff for planning commission and DRB. As well as staff to other committees related to planning, um, such as affordable housing committee, transportation committee and others. In highway, we have a full-time road foreman, a full-time assistant foreman and four full-time drivers and operators who are definitely earning their pay today with, with the snow that we have out there. Um, in the winter, they're plowing the highways, are maintaining equipment. And they're planning for summer work. In the summer, they're very busy uh, with gravel road maintenance, maintaining equipment, highway drainage work, maintain recreation facilities and larger sidewalk and stormwater projects. Um, prior to last year's budget, the road foreman came to us with a great plan to do. Use in-house labor a lot more on some of these stormwater and sidewalk projects that otherwise we would have to contract out. Which actually saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars over having to use a contractor. The library has a full-time director, a full-time assistant director, each work thirty two hours per week and six part-time employees. Um, the library is governed by the board of trustees, so they're a bit of a different reporting structure. They don't report up to the select board, but they report to the board of trustees. But the voters do approve their budget and their budget is included in the vote on Monday. Also want to touch on the water resources department. Um, this budget is separate from the select board or from the book, general fund budget and highway budget will be voted on on Monday. This is governed by the water and wastewater commission and there will be an annual meeting of the water and sewer commission in May to finalize the budget and rates. And again, there's lots of lead up to that. Um, we will start talking about that probably the next meeting in March. Takes a couple of months to finalize the budget, finalize the rates and then. Have an annual meeting in May and in- interestingly, this budget is voted on and approved by the commission, not by the actual customer. So that's the way that this budget is, is finalized. Uh, but there's plenty of time for feedback from the public and from the customers as we talked about that over a couple of months. The department serves about five hundred accounts, mostly located in the village of Richmond. Uh, there's a full-time superintendent and three full-time staff members. Uh, they're consistent with the water and wastewater department. So reserve funds, uh, as we talked about earlier, they act like savings accounts. They can be added to from the reserves yearly from tax revenue or that amount, and that amount is decided by you, the voters. Reserves can also be funded with non-tax revenue. We have the town center maintenance fund, which is funded by rent payments from the tenants in the town center. Uh, we also have the reappraisal fund, which is funded by the state's Act sixty reappraisal grant. Reserves are used mostly for large capital purchases. Uh, actual use of reserves does fluctuate a bit based on the current yearly goals. And the reserve funds factor heavily into the capital plan. Which plans for all of our large capital purchases over the next five years. This is a look at reserve fund balances. There, uh, there's quite a few reserve funds, but as you can see, the larger bars on the left indicate where we've got the majority. Of our funds. So you look at uh, town center maintenance, conservation, maybe I need to make these go a little bit different ways. I see Jay straining to read. I'll try to change that for, for Monday night's presentation. Um. I know that we have the ARPA money in there, so that's a little over six hundred thousand dollars, which was our first half of our payments which we received. In FY twenty two, we also received this past summer. Another six hundred plus thousand dollars. So the total amount right now is at about one point two million dollars. But these are all balances as of the end of the fiscal year of uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And then you can see town center maintenance, conservation, bridge and culvert, records restoration, sort of fill out some of the larger reserves. This is a look at total reserve growth over the last uh, twelve years or so. Just to note that I did not include ARPA on this because that is sort of one-time money that we get and it's going to be spent uh, within a couple of years. I wanted to look more at. What have we been saving for and planning for over the last twelve years? Historically, this chart hadn't included the cemetery fund. The admin's trust, or we have two Shonian scholarships, um, which are sort of special use funds. They're not really open for general use for um. Items in the town budget. So you can see that we started about seven hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twelve, we're up to about one point eight million in twenty twenty two. And um, we'll touch on reserves a bit here, but um, we talk about them a lot when we look at the capital reserve plan. I'm sorry, the um, the capital plan. We are right now trying to schedule the capital plan so that. Um, we've minimized the use of loans and that we are funding them at a consistent rate so that we don't have large spikes in the budget. Or large dips when we're trying to buy something or when there's years we don't need to buy things. We're trying to plan that out a little bit smoother. As we talked about earlier, the, there's a lot of reserve funds, but eighty eight percent of all reserves are in just eight accounts. I included ARPA on this as it is a large portion of the, the total overall reserve funds. But earlier I talked about town center maintenance, the conservation fund, bridge and culverts, record restoration, cemetery fund, fire department and highway reserve. So those are all in the hundred thousand dollar plus range. After that, there's other reserves that have smaller balances. So now we're going to look at uh, reserve account usage. We use sixty, this was for FY twenty three, which is the budget that we're currently in. We use sixty four thousand five hundred dollars from the reappraisal reserve fund for the reappraisal. Um, and then budgeted but not spent in FY twenty three was two hundred thousand dollars for the fire department for a brush truck. We had anticipated that we would need a down payment on that truck. Uh, we do not need a down payment and that truck is actually two years out based on. Production costs. So we purchased the truck, we have it on reserve, we're going to have to pay for it for another couple of years. We also put into the FY twenty three budget twenty four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. To pay for a police cruiser, but we've delayed purchases of police cruisers in this budget and next year's budget. Due to uh, short staffing in the police department and lack of use of the, of the cruisers, thinking we can extend their lives a bit more. Looking at FY twenty four, again, these aren't in the budget. These are in the supplemental document that talk about how we're using reserve accounts in the fire capital reserve. We have twenty five thousand dollars for new jobs of life. Five thousand dollars for replacement of roof shingles on the fire department. Fire safety equipment, we have eighteen thousand dollars scheduled for air packs and nine thousand dollars for air tanks in those air packs and eight thousand dollars for turnout gear. In highway, we plan to spend fifty three thousand dollars on a new pickup truck with a plow and a hundred thousand dollars on a tractor, which is primarily used for roadside milling. We also plan to spend sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the new sidewalk reserve. And that is to differentiate that from sidewalk maintenance. We have a reserve fund that we, we put money into. For, for new sidewalks and we're planning on a sidewalk that will go from um, on the. East side of Bridge Street and phase one of that would be from about the railroad tracks or Julian Cor area. Down in front of the town center to Esplanade. We're not going to plan on building that this year. This will be sort more some planning money for the summer. So now we'll talk a bit more about unassigned and restricted funds. We did touch on this earlier in the presentation. It's a combination of underspending and good revenue, which the surplus reverts to unassigned funds and restricted funds. Restricted funds are designated specifically for the highway department. It may not be used for expenses in any other department. And unassigned funds are attributed to any department except for highway and can be used for any town expense in the future, including highway expenses. So the balance can increase in a few ways. We, we've seen it where we've had FEMA funds that we've reacted to, um, we've. Dealt with the disaster, paid for things, and then we don't get the re-impressionment from FEMA for a couple of years. So we'll sort of fit it in. And then we'll get the money later in the future fiscal year. Um, also underspending on budgeted expenses, uh, when as a department, we have vacancy savings due to being short-staffed. Um, we will ultimately not have as much money going out in wages and benefits. Also, sometimes we'll receive a grant to reduce a budgeted spending item. Um, in conversation with our auditors, they've said about sixteen percent of your annual budget is a healthy amount to have in reserves to. Make sure that if you have an unexpected emergency or something comes up, you do have some money in, in the um, unassigned and restricted fund to help deal with those, with those issues. Um, yeah, savings helps us when we have a cash flow issue. So the fund balances as of the end of last fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, and unassigned funds, we had about eight hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, restricted funds, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. For a combined total of about one point seven, almost one point eight million dollars. That represents thirty five percent of the five million dollar FY twenty three budget. So you can see we've really, um, last few, it has gone up quite a bit. And as a percentage of the budget, again, we're shooting for that fifteen to sixteen percent. Uh, right now, we're up at thirty five percent. But. Looking at projected expenditures and increases uh, in FY twenty three, you remember when we talked about how this year's budget expenses. Uh, were lower than last year, but the tax rate is higher. Well, we used about nine hundred thousand dollars in. In unassigned and reserve funds. So this is a detail of what was budgeted in FY twenty three. So this doesn't factor into that figure we saw at the end of FY twenty two. This was the select board looking at, at reserve, uh, sorry, at unassigned and restricted funds in that process, knowing that we were getting a higher balance there. And trying to use them to pay down things in the future. Um, we had a compensation contingency because we were going through a compensation study and we wanted to make sure that we. Had some contingency in the budget for increases based on that. Uh, we were going to be entering into a new grounds maintenance contract to allow highway to focus on those larger projects and not have to mow the park. So we had fifty thousand dollar contingency there. Um, we got a new server for the town administration offices. We had ten thousand dollars for a new phone system. Uh, we put four thousand dollars into legal. Um, and then we had a general fund offset of three hundred thousand dollars. So initially, we tried to tie things to specific purchases. But then also looked at the overall funds and said, well, we can lower the tax rate if we just use three hundred thousand dollars. From the general, from the unassigned funds. Um, fifty thousand dollars towards highway equipment. And then unbudgeted, as we finalize the compensation contingency, fifty thousand wasn't enough. So we actually are going to be overspending by about. A hundred and three thousand dollars, so fifty three thousand dollars. Will uh, be overspent in the budget and that's going to be also coming out of the unassigned funds. Uh, we had a need for some thermal cameras and fire air compressors for the air department. So that's another fifty four thousand dollars that sort of. Happened in this fiscal year that will be going towards use of unassigned funds. In highway, uh, again, we had thirty thousand dollars set aside in the budgeting process for increased compensation. The actual of that came in uh, closer to fifty five thousand dollars. So that's where you see the additional twenty five thousand dollars is unbudgeted, but will be realized in FY twenty three. And equipment purchases in the highway department, as I mentioned, there was three large equipment purchases in FY twenty three, which were partially offset by use of restricted funds at four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So our projected FY twenty three year-end balances are about two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars for unassigned funds. Eight hundred and forty five thousand dollars for restricted funds for a combined total of one point one million dollars. Uh, the projected total is twenty four point five percent of the four point five million dollar FY twenty four budget. So still not down to the exact number that we were looking at. Um, but down from where we were at, which is about thirty five percent at the end of FY twenty two. So this is important information through the budgeting process as we get into budgeting for FY twenty four, that factored in. And as we look at the budget, we determined that we could use five hundred thousand dollars of restricted funds in FY twenty four to offset tax revenue to be raised. So the projected FY twenty four year-end balance is the unassigned funds stay at two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. The restricted funds would drop to three hundred and forty five thousand dollars for a combined total of six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And that gets us down closer to that sixteen percent. You'll see that our projected at the end of FY twenty four. Is thirteen point five percent of a four point five million dollar budget. Um, again, there will be things that will sort of change over the years, but. Looking forward, you know, that's our, our best projection and you trying to use these unassigned and restricted funds in a way to give back to the taxpayers because it's taxpayer money. And keep the tax rate as low as we can, but while still remaining in that sixteen percent range for having money on hand. Shifting now to general town debt, these are the uh, the debt uh, bonds and loans that we're still paying on. So we have a fire truck that comes due in twenty twenty six. We pay about ten thousand dollars per year. We have another fire truck also coming due in twenty twenty six that we pay about fifty one thousand dollars per year on. Uh, two dump trucks, a twenty nineteen dump truck that will have its final payment in twenty twenty four for twenty four thousand dollars a year. A twenty twenty dump truck. Uh, that will have its final payment in FY twenty five at twenty seven thousand dollars per year. The road graders final payment is in twenty four of thirty thousand dollars per year. We have a Jericho Road project, which was quite a large project and it has a longer payback time. So you see the final payment of twenty thirty two, fifty eight thousand dollars. And there was a stormwater project on Millet Street. Which also has a longer payback time. So its final payment is in twenty thirty two of seven thousand dollars. Um, and again, I'll just make a reference back to the capital plan that. We're really trying to get away from having these loans for dump trucks and fire trucks and graders and really. Build up the reserves to pay for those and that will help us avoid larger interest payments on these types of purchases. So now I'm going to go over a few of the larger changes by department. Um. Tried to hit on some of the bigger things. Obviously, if there's anything in the budget that anybody has any questions about that I don't cover here, um, feel free to ask questions at the end. So some changes affecting multiple departments. As I mentioned earlier, we did a compensation study. And that called for pay increases to most staff positions. So we did use fifty thousand dollars in unassigned and thirty thousand dollars in restricted funds in the FY twenty three budget. The actual increase in FY twenty three is about a hundred and three thousand dollars for non-highway staff and fifty five thousand dollars in highway. So again, that's speaks to a bit more usage of unassigned and restricted funds. These increases have been carried forward in the FY twenty four budget. Employees typically move up one step on the pay grid and pay grid. Uh, will increase for cost of living. Uh, in this budget, we. Budgeted in for about a five percent cost of living, knowing that inflation's running. Around seven percent for the last year. Um, also a change affecting all departments is we, um, for years, the town had paid a hundred percent of health insurance premiums for all employees. Um, beginning actually this past January, when we had the new rates for health insurance, we made the decision to uh, employee, employees contribute ten percent. For the health insurance. So the employees have a ten percent contribution and the town pays ninety percent of those premiums.
And Josh, our health insurance went up nineteen percent?
Yeah, I think that was the number. It was quite a, quite a big leap. And that's unfortunately, we have limited choices. Um, and nineteen percent was the number that we were presented with from the state and, and Blue Cross and Shield. Um, administration specifically legal increase from ten thousand to, or by ten thousand from twenty thousand to thirty thousand, that line continues to rise every year. The independent auditors, we decreased by eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, we had a twenty eight thousand dollars in the budget last year and now we're um. Um, the independent auditors, we decreased by eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, we had a twenty eight thousand dollars in the budget last year, and now we're um. Found a ten thousand dollars because we switched auditing companies and we have a a lower cost on that. We also decreased technology by six thousand dollars from twelve thousand to six thousand. Um, we had budgeted to replace the server in FY twenty three. And we don't need that in uh FY twenty four. The assessment, uh, the reappraisal is coming to an end this year, so that will be able to go from sixty four thousand five hundred dollars per year down. Excuse me, down to zero as we will be completed with the reappraisal. The police department, uh, we do not include the purchase of any cruisers in FY twenty four. Um, this is a reduction from ninety nine thousand dollars in FY twenty three. Where we plan to replace a couple of cruisers. And in twenty four, we will not replace any police cruisers. As we mentioned earlier, that's mostly because we've had lighter use on some of the vehicles due to short staffing. And we can extend the life of these vehicles. And it plays back into the capital plan where now we have a plan, we just sort of bump the replacement cycle out a couple of years. In the fire department, uh, we did have two hundred thousand dollars in last year's budget for replacing the brush truck. Um, it was budgeted to come from the fire department reserve to go towards the purchase of that truck. And it was offset by um the reserve fund and in twenty four, we will not be budgeting for that. We increased the fire capital reserve line from ninety five thousand, by ninety five thousand, from fifty five to a hundred and fifty thousand to save for future fire truck purchases. Fire trucks are very costly and we do have to replace a few of them in the next five or so years. Last year, we put five thousand dollars into a line to plan for repaving Volonters Green Parking Lot. We thought we might need some engineering on that. Uh, Pete, our road foreman, was actually able to come up with a really good plan for repaving the parking lot without using an engineer. And we plan to have that repave this coming spring, so that um is already in the FY twenty three budget. So we don't need any more money to go towards Volunters Green Parking. We also added a line for July fourth and fireworks for a total of thirteen thousand dollars. This was a decision that was made this past fall as the. July fireworks committee came to the select board to discuss challenge, excuse me, challenges of fundraising and organization for that event. And the board decided to start to take that over as more of a townwide payable event. Turnover appropriations, we had a rather large reduction of about twenty thousand dollars uh from Richmond Rescue. They recently took over responding to incidences in Heinsburg and St. George, and because of the increased call volume, they're actually getting more money through those calls. So they reduced their ask of all towns. So ours went from seventy eight thousand to fifty eight thousand dollars. Highway with increasing costs of gas, we've increased the diesel fuel from forty three thousand to fifty five thousand dollars. Um, we increased funding for illuminated crosswalks. Um, sixty five hundred dollars to allow us to install illuminated crosswalks. So those are the type when you push the button, they flash to let cars know that you're crossing. We also added in ten thousand dollars for traffic calming measures, and these are a little bit to be determined, but we've heard from a lot of residents of um. A need to reduce speed and overall overall speed on a on a number of roads. So we have a few, a few studies that we're working on with St. John County Regional Planning Commission to help address those, and there could be things from. Uh, new signage to painting to speed bumps to help us uh address those, and we wanted to make sure we had some money in the budget to go towards other measures. Uh, the retreatment, this is repaving increased from two ninety four to three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars based on the schedule that we have for. For paving. Also, the cost of paving has been going up like the cost of everything. Um, and we increased uh twenty thousand dollars in stormwater and sidewalks from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty. This is part of the plan that we have for. Uh, maintaining and replacing sidewalks. Um, this is where we talk about those three large purchases. As I mentioned earlier, we had a dump truck, a bucket loader, and an excavator in FY twenty three. In the budget that was represented as five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so these equipment purchases with the combination of FY twenty three tax revenue and restricted funds. Is how we paid for them in twenty three. We do not have those purchases in twenty four. Um, we have an increase of twenty five thousand dollars in the contribution from the highway capital reserve fund from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand dollars to help us pay for future truck purchases. Um, we have an increase of ten thousand dollars in contribution to the guardrail reserve fund from five thousand to fifteen thousand dollars. I know Pete's got his eye on a couple of. Spots where we do need some guardrails to be replaced, so we want to put some more money aside for that. And a reduction of five thousand dollars in contribution to the new sidewalk reserve fund from three hundred, about thirty thousand dollars to twenty five thousand. Part of that is looking at. What we're actually able to accomplish in the next few years, um, and some grants that we're hopefully going to be getting, um, to help us build the sidewalks. And there is the end of the presentation. So I'll I'll stop sharing, uh, unless we need to go back to a screen, which we can certainly do, but um opening up for questions.
I have two. One, um, regarding the reappraisal reserve, that's on a a a cycle that's somewhat indeterminate based on our. Grand list value. So we'll be good for a while, but at some point in the future, when it starts to, or. Data starts to creep up, we'll have to regenerate that. So that's just a point that it'll be hopefully ten or fifteen years out, but who knows? Um, and my other point was, we included some information about water sewer department, like staffing. We might pause and talk momentarily about how the water sewer department uh operates relevant to relative to the town. Because there's a relationship and money goes back and forth a bit, but it really is a separate budget and that's really my point. It's a separate budget. Um, with rates paid by the customers. And it's a point of confusion often when we come up to bonding authority, which requires a vote of the town to allow the customers to pay back the bond. That's my short version. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Yes, Jay.
I just want to actually echo something that Jeff said partway through. Um, when the reappraisal number is finally committed. Um, our grand list is probably going to go up, and that would mean that the tax rate probably will not need to go up as much as three point six seven percent, but we cannot promise anything. However, as Jeff said in his comment, the tax rate may go down, but the amount of money to be raised from taxes does not change. We still need that much money. But because the grand list value hopefully will go up, the tax rate necessary to achieve that money. Will probably not be as big of an increase as we currently have programmed in.
That's a good point. I'll I'll add that into the presentation for Monday night, because I think that's an important thing to just to explain.
Right, if if we're staggeringly lucky in a sense, um, we may, we might wind up with no net increase. I don't think we're going to be that staggeringly lucky, but the point is it's probably not going to be the increase we've currently got projected. And just also, I just want to call it Jeff's other point here. Jeff, thank you. Um. The reserve fund, I think that's a good point to be raised. I can. The purpose is to minimize fluctuations due to large capital purposes by putting money aside. So this is what you do when you're saving up for a hot tub, right? You just put the money aside. You don't take a big loan from the bank. You put the money aside. And then when the time comes to buy the hot tub, it's already there. Same basic concept. When are we are, when are we getting the town hot tub?
We, um, at one of our meetings, we had a presentation on the amount of interest that would be saved or that we did save. And I think that's an important pi- piece to share, just because it shows why if we're putting this money away, how much? And it was hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest that we're saving by putting the money into reserve ahead of time.
I can pull that up pretty quick.
Yes, Bernard.
You know, one comment I'd make about that is I think the desire to save money is attenuated by who pays and who benefits. So fire trucks where you can sort of plan the cycle and you want it to be flat, because everybody needs a fire truck when they need it, and so that's planful. And I distinguish that from maybe future sidewalks, because one of the tensions I see, do we want to charge current taxpayers? To generate a reserve for a sidewalk that will build twenty years from now that they will never receive the benefits of. So that's just something that we've talked about in our meetings, like. I think there are times where we really should be flattening things out and other times where we may face the issue of um. The people who benefit should pay, and that comes after it's built as opposed to flattening it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, very good point.
So this is that document you were talking about, June, that talks about interest, and this is, I think, since. Uh, since two thousand and six, we've paid total of the general fund four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars in interest. So not a small amount.
Change, yeah.
Yeah, right. Other questions?
One other quest, one other point that I'd like to bring up has to do with what we're doing with our money. It's the whole TD Bank sweep fund. Um, people will have noted that we have a lot of money sitting in the bank at any given time and, you know, waiting to be spent. And are we just, i- is it just sitting in a checking account drawing no interest? We've talked with our bank, TD Bank, about that. We, June and I wondered, why aren't we using what's called a sweep account to basically periodically put the money into an interest? A a more interest-bearing account. TD Bank pointed out that they actually have a program that they call the NOW program, which means money can actually stay right where it is. But still be treated as though it's interest-bearing and actually make more money doing that program than we would by actually using a sweep account. And also because of the volume of money that we've got in that program, they're actually um. Excusing fees that we would otherwise have had to have paid. So we are doing right now the most responsible thing, please to be earning interest on our on our banked money.
At at the same time, we have, if you did not see our last meeting, we have a um approved. Putting some of that money into CDs, so it'll earn more than what it's currently earning.
Right. But we're not just, we're not just, the money's not just sitting in a checking account or a cigar box. It is being managed.
Yes.
Uh, going back to the CLA, how far off are we? Because if you know that figure, you can calculate approximately how much. We're going to be able to reduce our tax rates. Are we eighty percent?
Yeah, we're about eighty percent. Yeah, we were, um, I think we were at eighty one or eighty two last year, when we decided to start with the appraisal. And I believe Linda might know the number off the top of her head, but I think we just dipped below eighty.
Yes, we did, just dip below, yeah.
And so you can calculate now what what that's going to be.
Be about twenty percent, yeah.
Yes.
So I just point out that's true in the average or aggregate, but then on the individual basis, if somebody's house improved significantly. They did a lot of improvements and they went up by twenty or thirty percent and somebody else ca- didn't do anything and they maintained the same value. The first person's taxes will go up and the second person's taxes could be expected to go down. So. Um, it's sort of like stock market performance. The average performance doesn't suggest what will actually happen to you as an individual taxpayer.
Right.
Can I also ask if these slides are at the website or will they be?
I'll post them. Yeah, I'll post them. All right, I didn't put them up just yet. I was kind of finalizing it yesterday.
There are a couple minor tweaks.
Sure.
Mr. Fuster pants over here.
No, please, that's why it's good to go through the run.
You want us.
There's a slide that said by use of restricted funds, we're able to lower the amount, and I'm like, don't you mean the use of unassigned restricted funds?
Oh, okay.
Um, and there was another place the word camera was misspelled.
Oh.
Sorry.
Camara?
Camara, you saw that too, yeah.
Okay.
Purchasing some Camaras.
If we're purchasing Camaros.
Camaro to the hot tub.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going full nineteen eighty ski resort.
Angela.
Josh, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Of the sixteen percent, the magic percentage of brandless that should be in. Well, you might have said that when you wrote that slide, but I didn't catch that. Where is that sixteen percent coming from, that number?
That's for recommendation for our auditors.
So our auditors are telling us sixteen percent. Do you know what? Like, uh, leagues of towns and cities is saying, do you know what any other sources are saying for a percentage?
I don't have a good number from league city town or anywhere else, but um both this auditor and the auditor prior, so we had a different auditing company prior. I think they said between fifteen to twenty percent, and this auditor actually said two months of your general fund budget, so sixteen percent.
Yeah, I, when we were at Town Fair in Killington last fall, that fifteen to twenty percent number was a number I heard from various the L C T people.
My follow-up question, I noticed on the trend line there that it's been in the last four years maybe that we've seen like. We'll call it a spike, but it looks like a general sharper trend. The slope of the line is getting steeper.
Yeah.
So any idea why that's happening in the last three or four years?
Since some of it is due to vacancy savings in certain departments where you maybe haven't had every every position full. Um, and I think some of it was money coming back from FEMA. Or we probably spent it in one year, and then it does take a couple of years to get things paid back to us.
And the gray stones, they wash out.
So even in the years. Prior to the steepening of the slope on the trend line there, we were still at a a surplus, so to speak.
Yeah.
Just saying, so even in those years when before this reimbursement from FEMA before all that, okay, just just trying to make things.
Yeah, let's go back to that real quick, because I think that's a good one. Um. Uh, percentage wise is good. So even back here, yeah, we were right around fifteen percent and started to get go up, and we kind of leveled off for a bit. And then I think, you know, at least in these budget years is when we really started to focus on. Let's try to put money back in, but even then we were still increasing, and that's where now hopefully we're going to bring that back down to the fifteen percent and start the projection.
My only other question in your slide presentation, you had in quotes the word surplus. Can you give me a little bit more detail as to what that word meant in the slide that that these reserve funds are surplus?
So it's, uh, maybe I should take them out out of quotes, because essentially it is a surplus. The the auditors calculate them as unassigned and restricted funds. So it is essentially a surplus in either one of those lines.
Right, and we we have to watch, I I do this all the time, the word reserve versus the word unassigned, because the reserve is not the surplus. The unassigned is the surplus. The reserve is money we potentially set aside.
Right, yes, right.
Just asking clarifying.
No, no, it's.
That it's as clear to me as it would be to everybody else out there.
Though I appreciate it. I I think I'm going to remove the quotes, because you're right, it kind of makes it sound like it's not really a surplus, and when it really is a surplus, yes, I'll remove the quotes.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of things. Um, uh, I I would imagine that the um, the increase in these reserve funds from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two. And some of that might be due to um, uh, federal money coming into uh town to offset salaries and offset. Um, you know, with the the, in in addition to ARPA, there was a lot of federal money floating around. Um, so that, I don't know if there's, I I don't think there's a way to. Suss that out exactly. Um, but um, uh, my guess is that would be one of the reasons for the big increase over the last few years. Um, the the other is a style, I have a stylistic suggestion, Josh, and you know, take it or leave it. Um, uh, I find that, um, uh, saying the dollar amounts. That are already printed on the slide is not necessary, it doesn't help me understand the slide better. Um, so and 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 you know, in some cases maybe, but in most cases not. Things like, um, uh, slides that have. Uh, percentage increases or decreases or whatever, and then have a dollar amount next to it. It's, I think it's good to have it on the slide, but I don't know if you need to say it. Do you know what I mean? You know, so like, uh, you know, um, you know, saying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and five hundred thousand dollars and, you know. Seven hundred thousand dollars here, there, and and elsewhere, um. When it's already up on the screen, doesn't help me understand it better. Understanding the differences of uh highlighting uh the important. Um, number on the slide as a percentage is more useful to me. Just a stylistic change.
Uh, and I would say people are different. There are auditor auditory learners and visual learners.
Not everybody can read quickly, not everybody has great vision. I think it is important to be as inclusive as possible.
And on Monday is going to be in a gymnasium.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Um, but if there's something I can do to explain it better, then definitely let me know. I mean, because I don't mind repeating the numbers and then trying to give a little. Bit more of an in-depth explanation if there's more than I should be telling.
Uh, and another thing that might help is um, uh, to pause between slides a little bit more. Um, uh, if if there's a lot of numbers on them.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that might, that might help.
Okay, thanks.
Lisa.
You're muted.
Looking for it.
Okay, thank you, guys. That's uh illuminating. I was listening to it. I, one comment is the, Josh, if you stress, you probably can't stress too many times. The fact that spending is going up, but but tax rate is not following it. Uh, you know, people are going to. Um, I think be confused. They'll they'll hear one of those two things. So maybe you can uh beat it more to death on how uh transfers from the reserve funds and so forth. Are actually helping to keep a tax increase from, you know, being any larger. People will see the numbers. What's that, Jay?
Unassigned versus reserved. Really important to remember, they're not the same thing.
Right, right. Well, that's exactly right, too. And I think you did a good job of that. They they show up that way. And you know, that's what they're called. So but I, my, my sense was that uh, people are going to want to dwell on that a little longer than you'd probably like. Um, but it might be important to get that point really, you know, solidly in mind uh, before you proceed on the rest. Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything else in the chat that could carry on?
Yeah, please. Okay, was just who's who.
Right.
Oh, yeah, Linda's pump.
It, Linda has.
Oh, Erin wants, oh, there you go. Okay, good.
Wanted to know who Bob was.
Yes. So Linda is saying that the cemetery, that none of the funds in the cemetery account or restoration funds come from the town budget and they both are extremely limited in their use, which is true. And they're, although they're in our audit, they are not our money to spend.
Fair point.
Other questions? All right, I think we can move on.
Oh wait, no, Jeff has a, we could have not suggested the dollar amounts besides not repeating every dollar amount verbally. Okay.
No, I think that is important to repeat them verbally because that's the point. If you can't read the slide, you can hear.
Yes, yes. I, I would agree with that. I think people learn differently and you bring up a good point that if people are visually impaired and can't see that, it's that the information is only half there. Yes, Bart.
This is a very, excuse me, subtle thing, but knowing i- if there were people using readers who have visual disabilities, the way bullets work on those readers, you need periods at the end of the bullet or it will just keep reading as though it's a run-on sentence. Interesting. That's a stylistic thing for accessibility for what it's worth.
Thank you for that.
Periods at the end of bullets.
And I tend to not put periods at the end of bullets, just because I tend.
Right.
Unless there's multiple sentences.
Formatting thing that you're taught.
I gotta switch that because you're right. I've heard that before. I need to start doing that.
Good, good point. Yes, Bob.
As a physiologist, I can tell you that some people learn best by looking and seeing and others learn best by hearing.
Yes.
I would argue we should keep them in.
Yeah. Okay.
On to item B.
On to item B, review and discuss article four, and I'm going to hand that off to you.
Right, well, good. I got a presentation for that one too.
Yes, of course you do.
All right. So this is for the waterline replacement bond vote, um, which will be happening March seventh, twenty twenty-four. To Bard's point, um, actually, I think I get to that later about how it's funded. We'll get into the presentation. So the article as it appears on the ballot is, shall general obligation bonds or notes of the town of Richmond in an aggregate amount not to exceed one million nine hundred thousand dollars, subject to reduction by available state? And let me, sorry, I need to format the thing in the room here. Yeah, I just want to make sure this is there for people. All right, so one million nine hundred thousand dollars, subject to reduction by available state and federal grants and aid and other financial assistance to fund the replacement of water lines and related appuntures along Tilden Avenue for approximately thirteen hundred and five feet along portions of Cochrane Road. Shouldn't that be twenty-three?
Where is twenty-three?
Where, where, sorry, Linda. Did I get the?
Was it on the previous?
Was it on the previous? It might have been, right.
There you go. Yep.
Oh, yes.
Twenty-four, did I say twenty-three maybe? I don't know. Linda, what are you asking about? Sorry.
That's happening this year, not next year.
Oh, God. Thanks.
I mean, presumably it's happening this year.
It's a twenty-four budget, but a twenty-three vote.
It is twenty-two. All right. Thank you, Linda. I'll change that. Okay. Um, all right, so this is thirteen thousand five feet, thirteen hundred and five feet on Tilden, sixteen hundred and fifteen feet uh, on portions of Cochrane Road and seven hundred and seventy-five feet on Bridge Street. So on Tilden, um, actually, we just went over this really. So there's two, there's thirteen hundred and five feet on Tilden Ave. There's two portions of Cochrane, which I have a map which will show in a few minutes, and then also portions of Bridge Street at seven hundred and seventy-five feet. So this is a map to take a look at where we're at. So Tilden Ave, you can see there on the top of the map highlighted in purple. And then we jumped down to Bridge Street below the bridge, down to the intersection with Thompson Road and Huntington Road, and then out on Cochrane Road. Cochrane Road is actually broken up into a couple of sections. There was a middle portion there that has, Linda, we'll get to your questions in a minute. There's a middle portion there that's been replaced more recently, so we're skipping that section and just replacing um, the two sections on either end. So the lines that need to be replaced are currently eight-inch diameter on Tilden Ave, which is cast iron piping from the nineteen forties. Bridge Street has a parallel four-inch and eight-inch diameter asbestos cement pipes from the nineteen seventies. And Cochrane has a combination of eight-inch asbestos cement pipe from the seventies and two-inch PVC pipe from the nineteen nineties. Um, we did recently have a leak on Tilden Ave, uh, I think it was back in November. So the, the line is aging and by replacing it will reduce the um, possibility of leaks. There's a, going to be replaced with twelve-inch C nine hundred PVC water main on Bridge Street. Uh, eight-inch C nine hundred PVC on Cochrane and Tilden. The C nine hundred PVC pipe has been what the town has been using um, for all of our waterline replacements over the past decade. It's sort of the new standard. Um, other components will replace hydrants, isolation valves, copper water services from the new mains, the edge of the town road right of way, restoration of pavement, sidewalk and lawn areas so that everything looks nicely when we're done with it. So the total estimated cost of the project is one point nine million. Um, this is a water and sewer bond, and as such, it is a general obligation secured by the pledge in full faith of the credit of the town of Richmond. So essentially the full grand list stands as the security for this, for this bond. So that is why it needs to be voted on by the entire town. Um, now however, it is only paid back by the water and sewer, likely the water customers, in this case, it's on the water side of the budget since it's fully a water project. Also, this is going to be funded by the drinking water state revolving fund. They have a priority list. We scored fairly well on the priority list. And that means that we're in really good shape to receive a fifty percent subsidy for the cost of this project. So that's not fully finalized until a later date, expected the midsummer of twenty twenty-three. But we do expect that we will be funded at fifty percent. Uh, we've done a few projects in the past decade that have also been funded by the DWSRF program at fifty percent or even more in some cases. Another benefit of getting the bond through DWSRF is that there's no interest on it. So this one makes a lot of sense to take bond, pay it back um, little by little over the years. So a forty-year payback on zero percent interest, the annual payment would be twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, and that's assuming that the cost is the full one point nine million. It's possible that the actual bids come in a little bit slower. So looking at the timeline, we have the vote coming up on uh, March twenty twenty-three, uh, this coming Tuesday. Should that pass, then in summer and fall of twenty twenty-three, we'll do, we'll work with the grant and loan applications, the final engineering and the bid preparation. In winter of twenty-four, we'll be out to bid for construction. So then we'll be doing construction of the water line in the spring, summer or fall of twenty twenty-four. So construction not until next year. So that one's fairly short. Um, so there were a few chats that popped up.
Yes.
Maybe we address those. So Linda, I'll change that. Um.
People are confused about this vote and the extension.
So this is not the extension on Route Two. This is purely a replacement of existing water lines. Um, that we're not gaining any new customers with this. We're not expanding the territory. It's just to remove and replace.
Yes.
You might want to put that on the front slide.
Yeah.
I will say, it's my experience, people, a significant percentage of the voters are confused by these bond votes every time they come up.
Yes.
It is most peculiar this time. I think it's more confusing than previously. So that's one comment. The other comment I'd make, and this may be more peculiar, specific to Tilden Avenue. So the line dates from the nineteen forties. My guess is my service line dates from the nineteen forties. And that there is now an initiative from the state to replace, to assess and replace antiquated service lines. So this calls out as we're doing this, we talked about this in the water sewer condition. Um, we're going to have to do an inventory, but as this comes forth, I think there may be an opportunity for customers to sort of couple their work with the contractor's work on the town service line to, hey, what would it cost for you to keep going and go all the way into my house? Because my thesis is the, I think predominantly galvanized service lines in the nineteen forties are antiquated. You can't, you're supposed to replace them now. That's the idea, right?
Yeah, and also galvanized lines rot from the inside out. And anyone who has a galvanized line from the forties right now shouldn't be surprised if their lines are piddling twenty-four, seven.
Yeah.
Uh, underground. That was certainly true on Pleasant Street when a number of us on Pleasant Street or some of us replaced our galvanized supplies.
Most of those old service lines are galvanized. Uh, some are copper, but even the copper ones most definitely were, were put in with lead solder. So there's a lead reach. Uh, and a lot of them are just not, we don't know what's there.
Right, we have an idea.
Could be galvanized.
Could be wood.
So while it's exposed, people should be prepared to address replacing their service line.
So that was my thought. We might want to add something as, as sort of a postscript um, slide here to say that customers should contemplate what they might want to do. And we had talked about as we engage in a bid or when we engage in a bid to um, see, um, to include something about customer um, service line replacements. Because once you're there with all the equipment, digging everything up, arguably, it's much more efficient than to then to come back and dig it up again with a separate.
Cheaper.
Much cheaper.
If it's part of the main project.
And I would imagine this is something that most customers don't see, don't think about, don't pay any attention. Uh, people aren't happy to hear that they're going to have to spend money. Um, but it's important to remember that it's much, much cheaper, like Gene June just said, when it's exposed to replace it versus, you know,
You have a weekend to do it.
In mid-December.
Yes.
Yeah.
You don't have any water.
Yeah. Yes, Jeff.
Jeff, you're muted. Yep, there I am. A couple of things. Um, uh, in the slide that talks about what the uh, uh, the payment would be, uh, the uh, the loan payment would be, um, I wouldn't also include, you have it at a hundred, a hundred percent. Um, I would include what it would be at fifty percent if you get the grant. So it's twenty-three thousand, it's at a hundred percent. Uh, but if you get the grant, um, it would be half that presumably.
Well, I should clarify that, that twenty-three thousand is actually at the fifty percent.
Oh, yeah. That's, okay.
Okay, I, I heard it at a hundred percent. So that.
I think I heard that at a hundred percent as well.
Well, we'll, let's, we'll clarify.
I'll clarify.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, 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 and a question that I don't know because I'm not on the water sewer commission. If you don't get the grant, will you still go ahead with the project?
Judgment call, but I, I think we'd have to look long and hard at not doing it until we could get the grant.
Okay, yeah, it's just a, there's a, a list of things to be done in order. First, we need the bonding authority. Uh, if we do have that, that doesn't mean we will do that. That means we have the authority to do that. So that's the first step. And then the second step, if we do get the grant, obviously that would make us inclined to go forward. But if we don't get the grant, then we have a conversation. We would have the authority to borrow up to that amount, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily would.
But we would also have the option to put it out here and see if we get the grant.
Yeah.
And I really don't think we would go forward with the full cost.
I think it would be unlikely.
Well, so you might want to say that.
I think, we're, I think we're really going to, we're most likely to get the grant.
Well, so you might want to say that, you know, um, uh, you know, I, 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 I would suggest to the water sewer commission um, that they might want to make a public statement about that in some fashion that, you know, at least be extremely reluctant unless, you know, or something, just to clarify that.
The Tilden Avenue line is a priority and the line is already well past its expected service life. Cast iron's very fragile. It doesn't uh, survive very well with grease loss cycles. It's corroded. Uh, this is a classic case. Jeff, Josh, do we know what the, the repair cost was for the leak on Tilden Avenue yet?
I don't, I, uh, we've been built for it, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, this is a classic case of, oh, we had a leak, we paid to fix it, that money is gone. We have nothing to show for it except our rusty line doesn't leak right now. Um, but it's, 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 it's not saving money to keep patching a line that has to be replaced eventually anyway. So the Tilden line is more of a priority. Uh, we would be not managing our assets well if we continued to patch it and patch it and patch it and had to replace it eventually anyway. So it, you know, that's a future conversation, but I would imagine it would make, make sense to replace that, make that a priority, uh, because long-term we would be saving significant money. And we would have a nice new line to show for our expense versus a leaky line that continues to leak.
I think Jeff brings up a good point in the chat too, that maybe a statement from the Water and Sewer Commission on Front Porch Forum sort of explaining, one, that it's for line replacement, and two, like this is long overdue so that people have a better understanding.
And I can update the presentation with a couple of these changes. And if you want to do a link in a post back to the presentation, it might help.
That's a good idea.
And David, that's, that's an excellent point. And, and um, uh, I would encourage maybe in the, the Front Porch Forum post, uh, but certainly at the public meetings to highlight how much more expensive it is to continually repair in the middle of winter. Because it always breaks in the middle of winter, doesn't it?
It does because of the freeze loss cycles.
You know, that, um, uh, it's, uh, it's much less expensive in the long run to replace than to repair constantly. This is just prudent property, property management.
Thank you.
Well, we don't have a, actual cost. If I remember some of the things on E D main, if I remember correctly, like the weekend break excavation overtime was in the neighborhood of twenty thousand hours per incident.
Yeah. One was thirty-five thousand, I think.
So it turns into real money that's like, you know, at one point, I think it appeared that the cost of replacing the line was less than the annual cost of maintaining the old line.
Right.
That's a, that's a good way of putting it.
All, all great points to make, you know, that, that, that would be really great points to make.
Okay, Bob.
Add to the Front Porch Forum not extending on Route Two.
Yes.
Yeah, Brett's not extending.
Should the contractor know that, that the he or she might be in line for going to the individual houses because of the time commitment?
That will be, yes, that would be communicated next year when we're putting it out.
Tyler was here, we, that was discussed. Our Tyler Billings, leading engineer we hired, we were working with on the project. In fact, I think he may have been the one first to bring it up.
Angela.
Josh, you might have indicated, but the Tilden Avenue um, cast iron, what is the diameter of that service bank?
I think that's eight inch.
Great. So you're replacing it with an equal capacity, no problem. But I did notice that the sixteen hundred plus linear feet on Cochrane Road has varying diameters that will all be upgraded the entire length of, you're proposing eight inch diameter? The C ninety, the C nine hundred.
So parts are twelve inch, but I don't think any of these replacements are twelve.
So I think.
My only point with that is in, in clarifying this with you is that that's actually increasing capacity uh, on Cochrane Road, and that's a positive phrase with this cost that we may incur.
So let's see, oh, right, so especially.
Two inch.
Three inch PVC pipe.
Is you have a typo in a, a, a later slide, the word therefore, yes.
Okay.
Um, if I recall correctly, the two-inch pipe is below, well below code spec anyway. Two inch was probably put in to save money in the nineteen nineties.
But that brings up the question, the stretch we replaced in the middle of the Cochrane Road. It doesn't make sense to go twelve inch, two inch, twelve inch. What did we replace that stretch in the middle with?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Tyler.
Because I mean, that's, if we're trying to upgrade the capacity, it makes no sense to then go down to the.
Yeah.
I believe it's twelve inch when we put that in.
Is it twelve or is it?
We're not going to solve the engineering issue today.
But, but the idea, if you're increasing capacity.
It's something to communicate.
But I think so, but I think so, so Cochrane and Tilden, we're putting eight inch in. And that's primarily what's on Cochrane right now is the eight inch. And that's primarily what's on Cochrane right now is the eight inch.
Okay, that section replaced is eight inch.
That would be my assumption without confirming that with Tyler, who's not here right now. I think it's.
That jives with my memory.
Probably eight inch on the branches and then twelve inch on Bridge Street, because that's more of the main than the eight inches that go off to the side.
To June's point, I just want to say this just brings out once again the fact that there's really nothing much more fun. Than being on the Water Sewer Commission discussing sewer and water.
Marshall.
Thank you. I'd like to just take a moment and bring up a detail which is, um, minor in the larger scope of things, but is pretty major for the property owners who have lawns along the water line. And I'll speak to the experience we had on Pleasant Street that the part of, and I heard this phrase, I think, uh, or alluded to, part of the project includes returning the site to its original condition. Um, and I would just like to point out that the contractors, when they worked on Pleasant Street, didn't. And I can speak personally, I have spent a fair amount of resources, both time and money, to try and return my lawn to its robust state, and I haven't been successful, and I doubt it will be because of the way the fellas didn't put topsoil in, but they put, uh, broken up, uh, what appears to be broken up pieces of road in where it should have been. So as a detail moving forward, I would like to ask on behalf of those who may have their lawns dug up to do hold our contractors responsible to, um, return the lawns truly to their original condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Yes, Bart.
I think this gets to the details of the RFP in the bid, so it's not just returning to condition, which can be interpreted, but returning it to top soil of a, uh, this is where you get into the details, top soil of a certain depth. Yeah. Versus just, you know, throw something in and grade it to the previous grade.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. But we first have to get the.
Yes.
Um, Lisa.
Yeah, a question about the vote. Um, if it is approved, how long does that approval, uh, hold? I mean, what's, when does that vote expire?
Is it three years?
Yeah, I think when we looked at the expansion for the gateway, it was maybe five years old, and I think that what the advice in the attorney, because there's not actually in statute, a timeframe that it expires, but there's sort of a political risk after a certain number of years of is it the same project? Is it, you know, the same voters, is it the same environment financially, like then you still want to carry forward? So I think the guidance was that it had been about four or five years since the last bond vote for the gateway. They advised doing another bond vote because the project had changed, there had been some time. Um, so, yeah, we would have, if we don't get the funding this year, I think next year, the year after, we could faithfully continue to go forward with this project on a on a cluster bond vote.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Anything else on the bond vote? Okay.
So as he's switching over, June, just to, for you guys, um, knowledge anyways, this is it. Like checking, uh, Robert's rules here and that type of thing. From a procedural perspective, um, we both Australian valid items, Article Four, Article Five, can be discussed as town meeting, and that's what the presentation is about.
Yes.
Um, and I can fix this, I think, but, uh, you know, Article Three has indicated any other business to be transacted. I'll probably handle that by unanimous consent, but I'd like to move that to the bottom from from a flow perspective.
Okay, okay.
That that that's sometimes when, you know, other, other, other pieces of business that, you know, may not be as, well, whatever, I I I thought I thought I'd do that, um, unless there's any objections. You had a specific intent in writing the article, the warning that way.
I don't think.
I don't think so.
I think we had, I think we had one, the Article One, Two, and Three was because those are the ones that were voted on that night. And then four, five, and six were the Australians. We tried to separate those out a bit in the wording, just so it was more clear.
Right.
But yeah, as far as discussion that night, I don't think there's any.
It just will help. I think it will have a flow better.
Yeah.
And I remain available to consult in the flow of ne- next year's warnings.
We will talk to you December. Are you up for reelection here or?
No.
Okay, okay, all right.
Okay. Moving on to C, review and discuss Article Five, shall the voters prove funding for the Conservation Fund by adding one cent to municipal tax rate in the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year?
So I'll turn it over to Bob Lowe, who will help us with the presentation. Bob is from the Conservation Commission.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Make sure to close your screen.
Thanks, everyone, for all that hard work, and I thought it was a very good presentation. It would be helpful to have the slides out so that if I, if no one else can at least go over them in a little more detail. Uh, I shall be brief. I'm standing in for Julie Rusowski, who couldn't be here, so I may have to defer questions to her. Uh, this opening slide just reminds us that we have an eighteen year old project that's been going on every year. It's a multi-purpose project. One of its highlights is the leverage it brings in terms of acquiring external funds. Uh, is had long and widespread support. Last year was about eighty, eighty one percent approval, uh, and that's approximately what has been in the past. So what will be voted on is the next slide. And you've really been over that, and so I don't think I need to dwell on it very much or or even read it. Shall the vote, shall the town vote to continue this fund is what this really says. On the next slide, uh, which you're intentionally not supposed to be able to read.
Don't read the fine print.
Unless you want to, at 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 our website, but more particularly at the site that is shown here, are are all the details, the kinds of questions people ask, the kinds of projects we've had, which I can help you within in the past if you want. And on the far right of map, which so so sort of shows you where things have been done. If we go in fact to that next slide, uh, you will see a close up of where the action has been. On the right, you will see the recent approvals that have gone through everything from Riverside Trail Improvement to doing more for the ESP problem, the Emerald Emerald Hashboard, Hashboard problem, and Gillett Pond replacement is probably the highlight there in terms of what's been going on. So now, uh, and the website has that as well. We can go to the next slide. Um, and this is just to remind everyone that that the whole focus of the Conservation Fund to begin with is to implement town plan initiatives i- in the general area of recreation and and conservation and preservation of of our working lands. And so it it it's really grounded in what the townsfolk have said over the years. They want to be accomplished in this particular town. And I don't think I need to read much further in that because the time I spend on it, I think allows you to go through that pretty well. Complete alignment with the town plan is is the basic message here. On the next slide, uh, here is the funding that Josh has already really referred to, one cent on the taxpayer, about forty five thousand dollars, as I recall, and and the cost to the taxpayer. So that you have a real feeling taxpayer for what it's going to cost you per amount of your appraisal. We go to the next slide. We see something really quite interesting. The question is what what leverage has been accrued? And if we look at CRF grants, there are a little over five hundred thousand. If we look at income that has come related to those projects, it's two million. And so we're basically a fourfold leverage. And that has been fairly consistent over the last several years. So we have gotten a lot of money for our, for the money we've been spending on this. The next slide is simply a a a list of what has been done over the last year from the Riverside Trail work, bridge replacement, Emerald, Emerald Lash Borer, uh, an engineering study for one of our favorite problems, which is parking. Uh, the Beacon Reserve Riverside Bench is another one. The Andrews Forest Trail Review is 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 an ongoing kind of study that's going on for the Andrews Forest. Gillett Pond is the is the is the is the accomplishment, which is probably most important. Sorry if we're not expanding the spreading the Excel sheet quite far enough. And, uh, what's anticipated is, I think, a very interesting and important workshop that's going to take place on March fifteenth at the library.
I think we might want to change works worship to workshop.
Yep, I think we should. And you know, somebody else.
Experts might disagree.
It's it's March fifteenth, six to eight o'clock in the Richmond Free Library. We have a panel of real experts, including experts who have spent a lot of time time in this town, uh, to look at our ecology, look at our conservation program, look at recreation. Uh, there will be some Front Porch Forum announcements amongst other things, which will tell you more about that. Question.
Then I'll write that in two columns. Is the second from the right, the money spent in the in this fiscal year, and this is money to be spent in the next fiscal year, or they're not labeled?
The money in the second from the right column is the money expended. For example, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, Gillett Pond, seven hundred thousand dollars is the approximate total cost of that. So there's an example of where we got a fairly large leverage, including, for example, federal money from from Patrick Lake.
I'm just saying, we probably want to avoid the confusion. I would label those two columns from the right.
Yeah, agree. Agree.
Yeah, Jeff had posted in the chat about columns being.
Having headers.
Yes.
I will see that that gets fixed. The next slide is just to remind us what's going on at Tilden Pond. We had to do, or the the Richmond Land Trust had to do some work up front to remove the trees and shrubs around the pond, uh, for a number of ecologic reasons, not least of which was for the long-eared northern bat and also bird nesting to get the trees out of there before nesting season occurs. And so that has all been accomplished. Uh, the tree wood was sent to Wood for Good, courtesy of the Land Trust, which I thought was a wonderful way to, uh, to use that resource. I believe the bids have gone out or are about to go out, and the hope would be that they will be successful, then we would begin construction uh, this summer or fall, but I'm not the right person to ask about that. Again, and the next slide is just the summaries. I think. Of where you can get questions answered, what the projects have been over time and what they've been for and where they've been taking place. And so finally, the the vote that will be made, uh, on Town Meeting Day. And that's all I would say unless there are questions.
Yes, Bart.
I'm just noting that Jeff had a comment that might lead to a tweak to that slide.
Yep.
To explain what good for wood is for people who don't know, maybe put something in parentheses, said.
Yep.
You know.
Could you bring that back up for a second?
Uh, which is.
Yeah. The like the third slide from the beginning with the map.
Uh, it's there. It's slide four.
Um, I was curious, in the very lower left hand corner on the map, there's, I can't tell if that's a U or an LI.
It's liquor recall.
Okay, I was trying, I didn't see a U there, and I went, where's the U? Okay.
Yeah, liquor recall.
Okay.
I have a question on how the how the amount was presented on the slide compared to how you had presented it in your so ten, ten dollars for every hundred thousand. Is that correct? Because I thought it. No, I I thought it was low.
No, would you then?
Yeah, it's ten, ten for every hundred.
Oh, it is.
It's a penny on the tax rate, which would be a penny per hundred dollars. And then it's ten dollars for a hundred thousand.
I got it. Okay.
Yeah.
It's it was presented as a penny, and I was like.
I think I did, I think I did both.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Like I talked about how it would affect the tax rate, and then basically your tax rate goes up, yeah, ten dollars for every hundred thousand.
Got it.
These slides, by the way, will be on the website. Corrected.
Great. Yes, Marshall.
In all detail, but I think it's important this year to have a consistent message, which is I heard a phrase saying that this will be voted on at town meeting. And is that correct or incorrect? This is going to be voted on Australian ballot on voting day, which is Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah, really want a consistent message this year. I don't want any voter disappointed that they don't have the opportunity to vote.
Thank you, Marshall.
I think that was just verbal. Oh, actually, yeah, maybe change the heading of this one.
Yes, yes.
Question voted on Australian ballot, March seventh.
Yes.
Yeah, if you give me the update, I can post it to website.
Yep, sorry about that.
Hey, I had five minutes each of my presentations too.
And I think the subtlety is there's talking and there's voting, right?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, did you have any hand raised?
Well, he's got a chat, no.
Let me get.
Yeah, so, uh, Josh, my recollection on the general presentation was, uh, you had a slide on the impact of this uh, to, you know, property values, hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred. Uh, and I, and I I thought it was much higher than ten dollars per hundred thousand. I thought it was like, my my recollection on that that slide was like a hundred and forty five dollars for a four hundred thousand dollar.
That's exactly right.
So I think.
Looking up.
So what I was looking worried about. Um, let me see, where was this? This was, uh.
Which seemed like a lot to me for the, um, uh, for the Conservation Reserve Fund. I hadn't recalled it being that that much.
Yeah, so let me clarify where I was going.
Thank you, Jeff. That's exactly the number that I was thinking of.
So you're looking at this one forty five at four hundred, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah, get that out of the way. Okay, so that's if the Conservation Reserve Fund question passes, this is the total increase in taxes and property value. Um, so that would be the total budget as presented and the Conservation Reserve Fund.
Oh, that's not clear. That's not clear. So, uh, uh, so I.
Go up, but up, so I did, you know.
But yes, if they can get confused, the voters can get confused.
Um, it's. So. You might. So this is where we said it would be, it'll add ten dollars in taxes per year for a hundred thousand dollars. And then the new actual increase would be this is the amount that would increase over the previous fiscal year, which is.
I would suggest having those as separate slides.
Yeah.
Rather than than including them together.
I mean, it it seems like simple math to say four hundred thousand, you'd pay forty, but still. I can see the point.
Yeah, I can, I think I can.
Yeah, I think that I think it is confusing.
People are going to see the bumper sticker number.
Yep.
That's what they'll remember.
Which is those right, right at the bottom, that's what they're going to read. They're not going to see the.
No.
Maybe what I'll do is I'll just take this total and say the increase for a hundred thousand dollars would be ten, two hundred is twenty.
Yeah.
Or is thirty.
Yes.
And maybe I can even put this next to like, uh, an updated this to say currently your basis is this with plus ten dollars for conservation, plus twenty, plus thirty, new total increases this. Yeah, that would avoid to be the confusion. Okay, I can do that. Thank you.
Agreed.
Any other questions on this? Okay. Are we ready to adjourn? Do we need a motion?
Um, yeah, motion.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, please, uh, state your name and your vote.
This is Jeff, I.
J I.
David, I.
Bart, I.
June, I. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
Ten, ten minutes early. This is something.
Bob, thanks for coming. All of you, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Thanks.